That's an ugly place. I'm sorry. It's.
Well, the.
They drive to the airport and it's just concrete.
Oh, and it's.
Parking lots.
The Mojave Desert is a very.
It's not pretty.
Desert.
It's not pretty at all. And only trees they have those little.
Sorry, no, enough space here. I think, yeah, just grab a chair.
Okay. I mean, it's just not a pretty place.
It's, it's like, so I lived in Tucson.
It's much better.
But, yeah, which the snowing desert is a beautiful desert.
Yeah, that's better, much better.
And I was like, well, that desert's a desert, right? It should all be the same.
No, no. Las Vegas.
Yeah. I mean Charleston, uh, Mount Charleston area is nice, or Red Rocks area is kind of nice. Lake Mead is beautiful. It's, 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 it was an interesting place to live.
Yeah, a lot, there's a lot of places in New York that are good, but Las Vegas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How was the, how was the sphere though?
The sphere is unbelievably cool.
Yeah.
And the Eagles are a perfect band because you're not gonna break off into like, you know, guitar riffs or, or drum solos. Because you have to coordinate with all the graphics.
Oh, sure.
So they're perfect and there's a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Speakers.
Yeah.
Inside the sphere.
Yes.
So that's another reason why the Eagles were perfect, because all their harmonies, I mean, you could hear, it was just amazing. It was beautiful. It was a bucket list thing.
I will, yeah, I'll tell you, it seems like every band that's played there, everyone's been like, they were amazing to see there, you know, so.
Yeah, but the dead, it was so funny, we were talking to some of our servers and they said, yeah, when the dead people were here, they'd order their food and they'd just sit there, look at it. They're still tripping.
I think U two starting that was probably.
U two would have been great, yeah, 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 that would have been great, but it worked like a needle stitch, so.
Yeah. That wasn't so much different for when the fish, when the fish.
Well, fish, fish has the same amount of people as, I mean, the same people as the dead, they're the dead, they're the same people.
Yeah, slightly different generation potentially, but probably the same, yeah.
Oh, maybe I'm not dead here. Okay. Dead.
Good job.
That's right. Much for that. I won't be able to flip back and forth between the springs.
Go the old fashioned way.
Just the old fashioned ways, right?
Just listen. Maybe talk a little bit. Um, you'll notice that we have microphones on the table. Um, Mark says that you can't turn them on and off, so if people start talking too much, it's gonna be super jarbled. So let's all try to take our turns and all that. And Mark, oh, no, we've got.
It's always a hot mic, right?
There's always a hot mic, so someone is always listening. It's the next one point. We've just been sitting here talking. Hopefully I didn't say anything too inappropriate.
Am I nameless?
Did I see Carl in the picture on page one dash six? Carl, are you in the comprehensive plan? Are you, is your picture there?
Do I have that open?
Is your picture in the comprehensive plan?
Oh.
Which one is it?
Maybe, just say maybe.
That would be news to him, obviously.
Okay, sure.
Oh.
Could be.
If it looks good, yeah. Wow, that's. Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
In the red shirt.
One dash six.
Mark, are we good?
Who, how did you spot him?
Are we recording?
It really is Carl.
Are we ready?
That's an old picture.
In the comp plan, there's a picture of a.
Four minutes before we start.
That's, he said we're already recording.
It's like his back is turned to the camera.
The clock back there is.
Uh.
It's all right.
So we probably should wait the extra thirty seconds.
Didn't know that was.
Yes, that is Carl and Melissa.
Okay, let's call to order the meeting, Plan and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. N C B color roll.
Yep. Ms. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Ms. Keys is absent. Mr. Montiel?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Mr. Kaplan is absent. Mr. Martinez?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Rensen?
Here.
And Chair Hagerty?
Here.
Present.
Thank you. All right, the next item agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. If I could, uh, ask for. Uh, ask if there's any change or edits or discussion. Seeing none, then, uh, call for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last week.
Second.
Thank you.
And we can vote.
Okay, Ms. Austin?
Abstain.
Mr. Adams?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Rensen?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, public forum?
Uh, there is no one online.
Super. All right, so we can then start the study session. Uh, I don't have to open that up, do I, for study session? So with that, uh, we'll open, or we'll start case twenty twenty-four oh three, comprehensive plan updates. Mr. Bro.
All right, uh, welcome. Good evening. Okay, so, um, we, a couple of weeks ago, we introduced this topic to all of you, unless you weren't here, of course. But, uh, we have approached city council. Uh, we thought we needed some, some, uh, additional work to our comp plan. We decided we don't want a brand new comp plan and council agree with that. We want, so we're just gonna do an update. And, uh, timeframe is kind of short, so we're kind of trying to do this in a very structured, efficient way as possible. Um, so last, last session, we introduced the topic and, uh, we, uh, thought we might go into some of the preliminary first chapters. Um, we decided, though, that we hadn't read, not enough of us had really read it, so. So that was kind of what we tasked you with, uh, for this session. Um, and I have to, I have to confess, this is gonna be a fairly light session, uh, because we just didn't have a lot of time to put it together. Uh, bam bam, thank you ma'am, you had to have this ready last Monday. So I did as much as I could get as far as I could go quickly. Um, but, uh, we'll, we'll keep this one fairly light and that'll be good. We'll gather kind of earlier, I think. But, uh, please be, keep in mind that November nineteenth is gonna be very jam packed. Okay, well, so tonight, our agenda is we want to review working drafts, uh, parts one and two. I've included, uh, the working draft that we are kind of, uh, gonna work together as a team on and make some decisions. Uh, then we will talk about the, and review the global trends report. Uh, there's a new global trends report from Progressive Urban Management Associates that was included in your packet, I hopefully. And then we will do a map exercise. Uh, we will try to apply the global trends report to downtown Inglewood. And so that will be a little bit, a little fun and a little bit different than what you probably normally are used to here. Okay, um, so working draft parts one and two. So let's start at the beginning. Uh, there is a foreword, uh, at the very beginning of our comprehensive plan. Uh, in our comprehensive plan, the current document, uh, they include upfront all the themes such as live, work, play, move, shop, learn, which by some, another one that I can't think of right now, but, um, they are included there and also in part one. Uh, so my question to you is, would you like to, in the update document, would you like to include those themes in the foreword, just as it was before, and in part one? Or do we want to keep it lighter? Do we want, because this is an update, do we just want to, uh, dispense the themes, uh, description of the themes in the foreword and just exclude there? So I'll throw it open to the group.
If we exclude them, where can they reference them? Back to the previous version or?
That is an option, but I think what we would do is we could put them in part one, chapter one, and, and more detail. Um, so that, that's kind of a, a question for you guys, how, how do you feel about that?
Maybe, do you have the, um, doc, maybe I was just talking about on page three where there's kind of an executive summary? Um, and then it has the live, uh, workshop, move, learn, play. Are you saying not including those kind of small descriptions in that part?
Yes, I'm asking that. Should we, do you like this here upfront in the foreword? Or would you be, uh, more satisfied if they were just, you know, do you want to be more brief? And you want to just, uh, put those in the, just part one somewhere?
And maybe, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think I found it helpful because you're gonna reference those later in the document anyways, and so getting sort of a preview of what's to come. Um, and it's a lot more digestible, I would say, when it's broken up into those chunks versus the full page of writing on the foreword. So seeing those broken out, I think is helpful.
Okay. Yeah, and also on page three, it's describing us Inglewood's vision.
I think it's important that that's what we envision our community to be. I, I mean, I like it how it sits in, in, in the foreword. I think it's important to establish this is what we're all envisioning for our community, um, rather than.
I, I would agree with that. Yeah, we, we need to let these people know that we have not changed the vision.
Okay.
Even if it's a reiteration, I think people always look at the last document, so I agree with them on that.
And is the intent for this update eh, to be a foreword to the document? The document itself stays the way it is, or will it be a fully updated, rewritten document, just that follows everything the same?
So the document that's there now will always exist. We have no intention of replacing it.
Okay.
Um, and we want to keep it as kind of like a snapshot in time that says, you know, at this time, here's what was going on here with issues. Here's, here's, here's why we did what we did. And this would be an addendum. Um, our thought initially was that this would go in front of the comp plan, the adopted comp plan. So, you know, addendum one, if we do another addendum, this would go to the back and then the second one would come up front just to show, you know, here's where we were, but here's where we are now, and here's where we're trying to get to.
And bringing that to the front, to kind of say, this is our update current, here's history if you want to see it.
Yeah, it's kind of like saying, everything else back here is still relevant unless we've updated it in here, which is like the data, um, or the new map, things like that that we'll discuss in the future. But, yeah, the comp plan as it exists will still exist. We'll just have some new references to talk about different things.
I'm generally for reducing redundancy, but I think if there's one thing to repeat, it's that, it's the vision.
Um, one minor comment, this is more, maybe more of a formatting thing, but it seems like at the bottom of page two, where you've got that yellow section that says the Inglewood Forward Vision. Feels like it draws your attention more cleanly, but then the foreword continues on to the next page for another two paragraphs. It feels like those could be flipped so that people are more, uh, drawn to the Inglewood Forward Vision statement and then each of those pieces. Rather than breaking up the foreword as a.
Excuse me, whatever we do it. So you. Vision statement and the.
Okay, so.
Themes on the same page.
Put Inglewood's vision, the live workshop, move at the very beginning of the foreword.
Potentially, I mean, I, I, potentially, I mean, I could see that, that yellow box at the bottom of the foreword being at the top of the page, because that's gonna draw people's attention. Most people are gonna read that and they're gonna skip over the foreword. So give them what they want initially, because most people don't have the attention span to read a hundred and fifty-seven pages, let alone. Full, full foreword.
This is the comp plan. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to part one, the importance of Inglewood. Uh, on page twelve. Of the working draft. Uh, so in the existing plan, uh, there is the, what the section called other existing plans. And so at that time, we included a brief description of all these plans going back to two thousand and three. Uh, which was when the, the, um, just right after the, the previous comprehensive plan had been adopted in two thousand and three. And so we documented all of the plans that had been done from then to two thousand and sixteen. And we, that's kind of what we, we kind of intend to do that here in our update. Um, but we were wondering about this previous listing of plans from two thousand and three to two thousand and sixteen. And is that something that could be referenced in the de, update document going back to the original plan? Or do you want to see all that information in the update itself?
I don't think it's necessary. What does everybody else think?
I couldn't hear you.
I just said, I don't think it's necessary to restate all the plans going back to two thousand and three in the updated comp plan, right? This stays, but please feel free to go on.
I agree. Anything that can shorten it is probably better.
Yeah, I think.
I think it'd be, I agree with you, I think it'd be good to have all of the updates in one spot rather than intermingled with the two thousand and three plan. So referencing the, the old plan on page twelve, I think makes a lot of sense.
Could you put a link to the old plans that suggests a URL rather than getting into any detail? So for the people that want to take the deep dive and go to it, they can, but it's not overriding.
Yes, I think we could. Um, are you suggesting that we, being able to have a link that goes exactly to the place, specific place in that previous plan, or it could just open up the plan and then you have to kind of go find it?
I'm not sure if I know enough nuance of it to say.
Near nuance.
Yeah, I know, links can get, web links can get updated and changed.
Just to clarify, this update's gonna sit on top of the existing plan.
Yeah.
Right, so you go, you Google Inglewood Comprehensive Plan, this will be on top. This will be the first thing you see is the update and then the rest of it, which includes this whole list of the existing or plans that were pre-existing, are gonna be there. I think it's all there. And maybe what I could do is just, uh, when I reference it, I can just say it's on this page.
That's a good idea.
And then sort of go find it.
Yeah.
It'll, then those click on it, it'll go to the, open up the original and they can go, oh, page twenty-seven, really? And finally.
Yeah, or put twenty-seven at the top, in the box at the top, yeah.
I think to my point earlier, like, really want to reduce redundancy. The only thing I would want to see again is the values listed at the top.
Yeah. So, page twelve, though, I don't know if that's the right page. Are you talking about table one-one, one dash one, or actually?
Yes.
Which is.
Yes, I'm, I'm kind of confusing it all because I'm looking at, page twelve is this working, uh, draft that was in your packet.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, I'm talking about table one-one in the original plan. So, yeah, it's kind of confusing because we're looking at the old plan or looking at the draft of the new plan together. And so, yeah, it is a little confusing this way.
But that is helpful, so we can flip back and forth, but page twelve of the packets that you sent out, the other existing plans, which is table one dash one. I guess the question then becomes, are there other additional plans that we would want to add to this table? And I would think that there probably are.
Yes, so, um, so, yeah, so these are the two thousand and three to two thousand and sixteen here in one eleven. But of course, then we have a new set of plans that are from two thousand and seventeen to today. And I think those are, those plans, we're gonna put in the update.
Right.
But these older ones, we're gonna leave them back here and tell people, if you want to see them, go back here.
I like it.
Got it, brilliant, yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
Yep.
Decision made.
All right, part two, Inglewood's framework, and this is page nineteen of the draft. These are the, our goals and objectives. And we're not going to, we've decided, we've told council, we're not going to mess with the goals and objectives from the two thousand and three. We're gonna keep those as is, because we, we've, we've, we believe that they're very timeless and that they're all still pretty good. If any of you guys want to look at them, you can go right ahead. Um, and if you see anything in there that you want to call attention to, at any point, let us know. But, um.
Can you maybe again clarify the goals and the objectives? Is that the work, play, live?
They're under those themes and.
Okay.
Um, let me, yeah, let's go.
Which is part of the vision, which is part of.
So, yeah, so.
Goals.
Because I'm looking in the existing comp plan, I'm not seeing goals and objectives in here and I, it just might be that I'm not in the right spot.
And so if you go to two twenty-six, that's where the live goals start. And so we, we have, we have goals and objectives under each of those themes. And so that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
And so we're not going to, uh, we're not expecting to change any of those. But as I said again, if you guys feel, have an interest in doing that, you can go look at them and see what they. And see, if you find anything that you think maybe should be brought to our attention, please do so. But we're going to, but we're gonna, in the interest of efficiency, we're just, we're not, we don't expect to change these.
Um, there's a couple that I have questions on.
Okay, do you have any questions right now? Do you want to ask them?
We, I can, unless you want me to wait, and I'm okay waiting as well.
Why don't we, uh, go ahead?
Um, objective live, uh, four point one, which is on two dash two six. Um, and in improved neighborhood identity through the incorporation of thematic designs and materials into new public improvements. And I know we've done some signage, but is there anything, any work that we've been doing? Or is there, is this a, a, a good goal to, to keep? Is this something that we still think is important?
Well, I would say yes, and the reason why I would say that is because, um, a couple of years ago, uh, they, the city manager spearheaded a signage and wayfinding plan. And I think these are something that's really, wasn't really important to him, coming from where he was, some of the places he worked before originally. Uh, the most recent was in Longmont. And so it's a pretty extensive, uh, signage and wayfinding design plan. And the, the vision for that plan is to really try to, um, look at the entire landscape of the city and try to come up with things that beautify things. Uh, particularly, they're doing, they've, they've done some different murals already. Like, I think there's some kind of a mural that's where the Little Dry Creek, uh, tunnel goes under Santa Fe, there's some murals over there. Uh, I think recently they did a mural on this building here, they had some interns do that. So they're, they're really, yes, and so, and then like, uh, the, the new bridge that is supposed to go over two eighty-five, they asked the consultants to design certain Inglewood el, artistic elements, symbols of the city into that as well. Uh, so I think it is very, still really pretty high up there in terms of importance. So I don't think we'd want to really ruffle anybody's feathers with, with that.
Yeah, I think the Old Hampden project, and then there's a project on Broadway that Public Works is working on that incorporates a lot more of this. We just haven't seen it all yet, but it is, it is being worked on.
I think we approved some funds in that, when we were going through the budgetary process as well to go ahead and get some of those. We had some monies set aside for that, I think.
Um, I know, I can tell you, we, we just got two more reviews for more neighborhood signs, so they're still pushing those out. Um, but then what I do know is we've seen some renderings for some of Public Works upcoming projects that incorporate a lot of this wayfinding. Then we're seeing other organizations change some of their signage, so, like I said, this one's still kind of ongoing. It hasn't been, uh, seen all the way to fruition yet, but I think it is very much still part of what's going on. Go.
Well, I, I think it's important to note that, this is talking about when there's new public improvements to incorporate some of this identity. This is not just all new signage or a new campaign of some, this is like when we're, when the city is doing new public improvements, they should incorporate thematic design and materials that support the identity of the name.
So some, we should be keeping in mind as we're doing these public works projects, it's a good point.
As, as part of that Public Works project.
Yes.
And their, their budget, not a separate item necessarily.
Yeah. Um, another one that jumped out to me was, um, objective work one dash four, one point four on page two two eight. Uh, encourage diversity in business types and available spaces through an economic development program. And I, I, I like the idea of it, but it's also, it, it, there was goal three point one, which also encouraged mixed use developments. Includes both housing and business employment opportunities where appropriate. And I know we've been kind of coming back away from that where we've only got that only in one corridor, and I know there's challenges with that. But, you know, are we, are we saying that we're doing these things and then not actually doing them?
Okay, you, just to clarify, is.
Yes.
Work one point four?
Uh, work one point four, yeah, diversity in business types and available spaces through economic development, which I don't know if we've got an economic development program.
We do.
We do, I'm sure.
Okay. Good.
Well, I know, who would know? No, I'm just kidding.
His name is Darren Hollingsworth.
Okay. Fantastic. I'm glad it's.
Do you know Darren?
I've, I've gotten emails from him.
Okay.
And then.
Parts of Inglewood are also, uh, in that, um, opportunity zone.
It is, yeah.
And the enterprise zone. So one, one supports residences and one supports business.
Fantastic.
Yep. With tax incentives.
Those seem like good ones to still keep. And then the other one was three point one, mixed use development. And I know maybe downtown development, redevelopment might have that, but we had had that on Broadway. We'd had that requirement on Hampden, but kind of got rid of that requirement on the Hampden, or Old Hampden.
We didn't necessarily get rid of the requirement. What I would say is we got out of our own way to stop prohibiting it. What our requirement said, you have to have X amount of commercial or X amount of percentage, and that doesn't incentivize mixed use development.
And first floor retail, I think, was part of it too, wasn't first floor, floor retail part of it too?
So the new code says, um, it's a little bit less. It's a little bit less restrictive in saying that you have to have mixed use, but it just doesn't define a percentage. Or it says your residential use, units have to be so far back from the right of way. So it's still encouraging mixed use, but it's not saying this whole first floor has to be mixed use. What we've heard from the development community, and I've heard of this in other cities, is requiring that almost guarantees that the majority of that is probably gonna sit vacant. Um, until we hit a certain threshold of residential units, that stuff, it just is subsidized by the residential units, and so it just sits there. And so the other, you know, I've worked in cities where it required us, you know, any right of way, any portion of right of way, you had to have mixed use on the first floor commercial. And most of the times, people would want to turn that into like a live work because, you know, you may not have the traffic to, to get all of that activated. So we incentivized it through what we did with code next by kind of just getting out of our own way and saying, you can build it, we're not gonna tell you how much you have to do, just that it has to have some percentage of mixed use on site to get certain, um, lowered setbacks. Or you can build all residential and push your building back a little bit.
Brian, just for my own, I guess, education here, is that, you know, where a lot of municipalities push ground floor retail activation or commercial activation, is that for a tax basis, is that for a larger sort of community character? Like, what's the, why do, why do some places push that?
Why do they push mixed use? Because it's cool.
Well, there's also, I mean, I think it's that, that fight in cities, right? Like, if you can have a. Like, if you can have a restaurant and a grocery store that you don't have to go drive to, then you've got that mixed use development.
Yeah, it, and it helps you get, I mean, it, it's just in its own name, the mix of uses all on one side. So you can have restaurant and retail and all these things in the same place that you can have folks living. Um, but it's kind of a, a niche thing that it became cool at some point, and then everybody thought, well, this is the greatest thing in the world, we all want it, we want mixed use. But mixed use doesn't survive everywhere.
No, you see tons of vacancies in Denver and River Wands and Four River Wands where those ground floors just sit.
So what I would say is you can have vertical mixed use, so if you think first floor retail, residential bub, or you can look at it from a more district-wide approach and your mix of uses is horizontal. So you can have commercial next to residential, next to more commercial and have it kind of meet. So I, I think that's more of our approach, is more of the district-wide approach of we want to look at the mix of uses here, rather than every building has to be stacked with commercial and.
Yeah, it, you know, there's, um, I would point to the Broadway, Akoma Lofts project is a very interesting example of that. Um, so the building that's on the corner of Broadway and Inglewood Parkway, uh, it features retail on the first floor, and that's really appropriate because it's, there's a lot of good traffic there. Uh, and that's where One Barrel is, and as well, and then farther back, there, there's a restaurant space that was a pokey, poke place, or I don't know. Yeah, that, that place I think has gone out of business, so we're looking to fill that space. And then there's the pharmacy, and the pharmacy actually wants to move to the Walgreens site at Dartmoor. But, uh, but, so, but that has worked fairly well, it did get leased, and, uh, um, but obviously the, the section that's on Akoma, uh, they, they, they really didn't wanna build that kinda stuff there cause Akoma is a very secondary street with, that won't be, have the visibility, and so it doesn't really make sense there. So that, that's really kind of a good, uh, and so, you know, if you're too prescriptive with your mixed use, the market doesn't have the flexibility like that we had there with those, with that project. Um, another interesting project that, uh, I think is going to start blooming, that ha, it's been, it's taken a while, but it's getting there, is that Synergy Medical Office Building that's just across the street from Swedish.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so the first floor there, they, they did, uh, listen to us and, and, uh, thought that they would, they took a chance on some retail on the first floor. And it's been, uh, pretty slow to lease, but I think there is some, uh, things that are supposed to be popping up. I think there might be like a coffee shop, a restaurant, and a flower shop or something like that.
I think there's a flower shop and a Starbucks already there.
Yes, there's a restaurant.
There you go, so, yes.
But it took a while.
It took a while.
Yeah, it did.
So, so yes, and so that kinda also shows you how it, it isn't always easy. And so it wasn't necessarily a home run right away, cause that's kind of a, it, it's a interesting, you know, there, there's some potential there cause you got the hospitals, and there has been historically some small, uh, mom and pop style retail on that street. Uh, but it's far from established like Broadway is, so there's a little more risk there.
Colin, back to your question, I think the objective there is encourage, not require, and where appropriate.
On board. Uh, last one that I thought was worth talking over were, uh, objective move, goal move four. Um, really all of them, but especially four two and four three, which are examine the feasibility of shared automobile programs and related parking regulations, and examine the feasibility of shared bicycle systems, partner organizations, and funding mechanisms. And I, I think these are both great thoughts. Um, really, I think, pretty forward-thinking, especially when this was all put together. But are we, are those still the ones that we wanna keep moving forward? I, I, I think so, but are, are there, do we need to pivot at all on, on those? Cause they're, I don't think have been implemented to change the way that we're looking at them.
Yeah, that's very interesting, cause I think, you know, shared automobile programs, I'm, you know, I haven't really heard a lot about that lately. And I, you know, that'd be interesting to go back and to see what the state of that, uh, is right now. I think at the time, there was, uh, um, more presence or companies out there that wanted to do that. And I'm not sure that, that, and just like bicycles, that's another thing where, uh, that changed a lot too. And so like, in Denver, they used to have everything, they would have these, these B-cycle stations. And, and then, you know, these other companies came in with this new paradigm where, you know, you didn't have to dock your, you didn't have to go dock that bicycle or scooter there at some station, you just left it wherever you left it, and someone could come and say, oh, oh yeah, I wanna go ride this thing, and I'm just gonna, and they had, they could just, you know, they, if they were signed up, they could just release it and go off. And then some peoples would come and redistribute those things in the morning. And, um, so, you know, Denver doesn't have their B-cycle stations anymore. And then Aurora was one of the first pioneers in a lot of that dockless, uh, companies in there, and I think that's all gone away. I think that, uh, there just wasn't, it, they couldn't make it work in Aurora, there wasn't enough demand. And so I think that's all dried up in Aurora, and, and they all now focus just on Denver and kind of occasionally a little bit out to places here like Inglewood, it's, you know, on the edges. But, um, so yeah, that, those, those industries are changing a lot in just a few years. And so that's interesting, and then I just, as you pointed me out to this, I saw that in the objective move four one that there's some, there's a little reference to the art shuttle.
Yeah.
Which is no longer, it does.
The trolley?
It's called the trolley, isn't it?
Inglewood trolley.
And it's gonna soon be called something else. Called Burt.
Burt.
Oh.
We're Inglewood residents together.
It's just gonna go in a straight line as opposed to zigzagging.
Where, where's the B?
Oh, Inglewood riders.
Bringing Inglewood riders together.
I would say for that move dash four, there are gonna continue to be alternative transportation options that are gonna come to market.
Yeah.
There is one survivor, Colorado Car Share, which is a car share mo, uh, program, it's nonprofit. They partner mostly in low and, or disadvantaged and underserved communities. Um, so I, I think there's stuff out there, and I think there will continue to be stuff, and I think as much as we can continue to include options to get away of single occupancy vehicles and reducing single occupancy vehicle trips, we wanna do that. So maybe these things change or get looked at, but I think we still want something, whether it's not develop shared transportation options, but develop alternative transportation options or sustainable transportation, something like that, and just knowing that.
Just alternative, that's, that takes everything.
There's gonna continue to be alternative options that we wanna support.
And I think, again, also then remembering that we do wanna support those, right? And, and trying to figure out, I think that, what this has also helped me do is remember where we are trying to get to here by going through all these. Like, there are opportunities that we haven't taken advantage of yet that we should still continue to push when we're reviewing these developments that come, come to us, so.
Yes, and, uh, we, uh, in the next few months, I believe, uh, the Arapahoe County has taken on, has developed a, uh, and applied for money from Dr. Cog to do a, a micro transit and micro mobility study. And we've contributed some money to that, Inglewood and other cities as well, uh, to study these different micro transit and micro mobility options that might be, uh, implemented throughout the county. So something, some things might come out of that as well, where we could actually, it might give us some advice on how to approach some of these things. And we may, it may, and there should be some future monies available for some of these things. And so maybe the time will be ripe in the next few years for us to, um, you know, maybe, maybe it's, uh, the city goes out and puts an RFP out for, uh, a scooter vendor that will serve Inglewood as well. So, so yes, so, um, it's still pretty timely, and there's some opportunities there, uh, here in the next year or two.
Well, then all the more reason to leave it as al, alternative, rather than specify anything.
That sounds like leave them, or make, make some minor tweaks, but leave it generally, thank you.
Alright, so, so my original question was about, was about these goals and objectives. Um, so my thought is that we leave them here in the original document, and we don't necessarily re, restate them all in the, the, uh, update document. Does, does, I wanna see if, how people feel about that, do you agree with that, and will just sell, tell people to go back?
Do you envision that some of these change at all, or are these essentially staying the same?
We have, we have told council that we don't intend to make changes to these.
To the objectives.
Yes, goals and objectives.
Stick to that if that's what you told council.
Yeah. And also, I think they're, they're pretty well-written, like, I, I, they're, they're malleable enough that they can be applicable today. They're, the ones, I had a couple of questions on, I think everyone seems pretty good with the way they are, so, I mean, I, I don't see any, any issues with just leaving them in reference.
Are there, uh, let me just ask the question, are there items like that move goal that you'd wanna just tweak like a word or two? In removing, you know, ride chair, or just change it to alternative transportation to make it more broad? Like, are there things like that that?
I mean, I think that's what we're just discussing.
Can we, yeah, can we do that to the original document, is that what you're asking?
I'm, I'm asking what, like, on that one, it seemed like y'all wanted to kinda shift terminology a little bit to make it, you know, we sometimes pick the, the hip item at the time and say, this is what we wanna do, but let's use some terminology now that doesn't limit us to saying, we're only gonna look at this form of alternative transportation rather than all. So, and maybe that's something we present to council as, you know, we, we said we would do this, but there is a question if they could change a word in this goal, or a.
Well, the art shuttle, we will need to change, I assume.
We could leave it as, as it is, as a memorial to what, what we had at the time.
Well, the memorial will always last, and the adopted plan, the new plan could now memorialize what we have now. And if that changes by the next time we do it, then it'll come back.
Well, we do, you do talk about alternative transportation and the air quality. Uh, in goal move to improve environmental quality, promote the use of alternative transportation modes to improve air quality. So it's not like we're leaving anything out. I don't think, I don't think the changing the goals, just because, you know, it's, it's as broad-based as you can get because it's impossible to try to predict what kinda technology is around the corner, and you'll make yourself crazy if we update every time somebody invents a new way of getting around. What was those things that they use at the airports, those were supposed to be all over.
Segways.
Segways, yeah, you know, so you know now.
They're big in Washington DC though.
Yeah, is that right?
For tours, for tours.
So again, I, in reading through them, and, and I'm sure there's an opportunity for you to continue to read if you feel something very strongly you want to change, I'm sure you'll take that into consideration, but they're, they're pretty well-written in, in that they can be forward-thinking, I think.
One general comment, this kind of applies to the main heading of any of these, where, um, there's sort of a goal learned one, and then sort of a sentence after it. If you can compress those, it might be a little easier to sort of skim through and look for the thing you're looking for. So, um, there was one with move, that was, sorry, I scrolled past it, give me a second. You know, like, goal move three says, improve pedestrian and bicycle environment throughout the city. That's totally fine, but it feels like it could be shortened because the meat of that is in each of the topics below. It might be easier to adjust if you see goal move three, pedestrian bicycles, and then move on to what those things are. Cause it feels like some of them are a sentence as the description of that category, which feels just too wordy.
But would you be okay if they didn't?
Okay, so. I mean, if they didn't, I'm just saying, like, I'm thinking of the every man who's gonna try to read this and absorb it. Simplification, editing down, I mean, I'm the wordiest person you'll ever meet for emails, if you ever run into me for work. But I, I try to edit it down wherever I can, and I think that's to the benefit of passive users, which most of the people reading this are not gonna be super involved.
Okay, I guess I just have another question of clarification. This plan stays as it is, like, this is gonna live exa, all the page numbers, the title, the language is gonna, and then on top of it is an addendum that's saying, here's what we're updating, right? So like, goal move three, that's gonna stay just like that, cause it's an existing document, right? We're not rewriting that part. You're, you're putting together an addendum to renew it that sits on top. Um, so just, I guess, to focus our efforts and energies here tonight, we were a third of the way through the document, and we've talked about like what to re, include in the new plan, and we've talked about what you've said isn't gonna change. It might be helpful for me anyway, and maybe a consensus here of like, what are we putting on the table to change? And maybe we focus our efforts on that. That, I think that would maybe be a good use of time.
But I, I think there's, anything's open to change if we think it's, it's strong enough. I, I don't know that I wanna rewrite these individual headers because we're not changing them, they're gonna live in here. If we were rewriting this whole section, yeah, totally agree with you.
But I guess to pick up on Aaron's point, so what are we doing?
Are there things in here that we say we want to change, like, that need to change?
In the original document.
From the original document, yeah.
The article plan is to then rewrite this and reissue it as an addendum.
The, the, the intent would be to have like a foreword and say, you know, and maybe you can help, uh, explain this to say, you know, instead of, um, you know, there's student populate, there's population change numbers, those changes are now this instead of what they are shown here. Or there's, um, you know, business tax bases, those are now this instead of this. But this whole document stays exactly the way it is, just with the foreword saying, this section is superseded by whatever this section is. Is that, I don't know if that was clear at all.
To Aaron's point, or go ahead, I'm sorry.
You go ahead and, uh.
I will say to Aaron's point, is the things that we really do have to change is, we have to talk about it, is the global trends that we're about to get up to. Because the things that really have affected our C is, uh, people are working from home, there's no, we have all this office space now. How do we wanna use this document to guide the next, uh, bu, bunch of business decisions that our council makes? Um, uh, along other global trends that I'm not just gonna split off here. But, you know, the pandemic changed us, our real estate's changed, people are working. So to Aaron's point, I think we could, if this is livable, you know, if, if these goals, um, are still something we can continue to use our, our budget forecasting around, cause they do use this. They say, oh, how much did you spend on this? Um, I would say let's, let's move on to the framework, if anybody, unless there's any objections.
The other thing I'll say is, um, from a planning perspective, this is not a typical comprehensive plan revision. It's kind of an atypical of what we would normally do. But we're, what we're, we're trying to do is to make sure that we have all of our conversations out in the open about what we're changing. That's why we're coming to you. There may be days where we're coming to you and just presenting information that we've, uh, researched, and there's not a whole lot of input necessarily needed. Um, we'll do our best to make sure that we always have some input at every meeting. Um, but there may be days where we're presenting, we're presenting just factual data as what the updates are. So yes, there, like John said, there may be light meetings, there may be heavier meetings where we have a lot more change. I think right now, what we're trying to find out is, is somebody that might just read the document that's not one of us, cause we read it pretty much, you know, we use this a lot. Um, what would you like to see in this revision, this new addendum that will go ahead of it? Do you wanna see us just regurgitate a bunch of information that was already in the existing one? That you can still find in the existing one, or do we want to really only provide the updated information? So that's the questions that we're asking, is what do you want to see in there? If you're a citizen that's gonna read this, what would you like to? If you're a citizen that's going to read this, what would you like to see in there? What would you not like to see in there? I can understand, it is a very different look at this. I think everybody wants to update a comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, that's not just the timing we have right now for a full update.
I would just offer, restate the goals and the vision, whatever, the vision, why we're doing this. I don't think we need to weigh in on copyrighting, and like, what's most effective, I mean, you know, like, do we restate this, do we not? Like I said, the goals, and then what's different, or the vision and what's different. That's my opinion. And then I would like to weigh in on what it is that we suggest changes, the changes be made. You know, I think there's lots of very good people, probably on staff or not, that can, you know, wordsmith and copyright and do all that. I don't think that's us. So...
Chat G P G.
That's my thoughts on it, is rather comment and get into what things should and could be updated over the past eight years.
We will.
So, will we give council the original and a draft copy?
Well, they should have the original. So, yes, we will try to show them what we've, how one, you know, we'll probably go through the, in a very similar fashion with council, where we show them, okay, here's what the original plan looked like, and we've made these decisions to, you know, take some of this structure and form the update, but some of this stuff, we're just going to reference back to the old plan. So we will explain all that to council.
I mean, just do the changes in red, you know, and give them a draft copy.
They'll always have the original. The original will always live as an existing document. It will stay, like this webpage, if you go to, Inglewood Comprehensive Plan has its own webpage underneath Community Development. There's the Adopted 2016 Plan, the Comprehensive Overview, and the 2003 Plan. So we're going to add on another one, right? That's, yeah, so it'll always be there.
We're not editing.
Yeah, we're not editing.
Totally new document, that'll just say 2025 update to this, or 2025.
It's like a new forward to a book, basically, is what we're doing.
Yeah. A new forward to a book.
I don't know if this, and I don't know if this is goals and objectives, but for the live one, I know Dr. Cog put out a new housing needs assessment for the metro area that includes some very interesting statistics for Inglewood. I would love for some of that information to be referenced in addition to group policies, needs assessment. I think the Dr. Cog one puts things in perspective, in context to neighboring cities and around the metro areas, so I just want to make sure that that's taken into account. I think that came out in July.
Do we have that? Did you send this out?
C O G.
Yeah, D R C O G. Denver Regional Council of Governments.
I would think that would be part of our Global Trends Review.
Global Trends is a specific thing.
It could be another document that's referred to.
Yeah, there's so many Dr. and Dofkens that we will need to somehow address and incorporate. And so, yes, we will try to hunt that one down, the Dr. Cog Housing Needs Assessment, and pass it around.
Do we have our update, or when's the plan for our housing needs update?
Well, we have, it is basically, was completed.
We did one in Code Next, didn't we?
No, well, it was a sub...
Group Policy.
It influenced some of the decisions that we had in Code Next. It was presented to council in November of 23, and then again, I think in March or April of 20, sorry, November of 22 and March or April of 23.
It was a different, it was some entity that we hired, or the city hired.
Yes, Group Policy Research.
That's it, yeah.
But there was then a committee formed from that.
Yeah.
That also is providing an update of some sort, I believe?
Well, there, so there, so, there's a lot of... Intriguing information that got people kind of really excited about what English do about that housing needs assessment. And yet, there is a lack of a lot of, maybe a lot of knowledge about what might be feasible or workable, and they really came up some interesting ideas that sometimes generate controversy. So, they kind of got ahead of their skis a little bit. That's what I will say. And so, then they pulled back on some of that stuff and decided, okay, we've gotten kind of in a little bit of trouble, let's pull back, let's create this Housing Task Force with people, with a wide gamut of peoples. There's peoples from the affordable housing community, there's citizens of Inglewood, there's representatives from hospitals and the business community on this group. And they're taking a very long, year-long process to learn about, in much greater detail, the different alternatives that are out there that could be pursued in trying to implement more affordable housing in the community. So they've learned a lot. Right now, they've gone through mostly the education phase, and now they're starting to get into the phase of what are some of the things that Inglewood, that would be workable for the Inglewood to pursue in this arena. And that's supposed to conclude here at the end of the year, and they're supposed to come up the report that goes to council. And then, you know, hopefully, at that point, that council would be able to develop and adopt policies going forward for, in this arena. So, we're hoping to, you know, incorporate whatever comes out of that task force into this as well.
It's not a new report, it's not a new analysis, it's a group of citizens that are making recommendations to council around affordable housing.
And so, likely part of the foreword and part of the discussion, these are the results from that, something of the shape of.
Yeah, there will be two big sections, I think, in there that talk about the policy recommendations made by the Affordable Housing Task Force, and then discussions about the legislation that was passed this year. You know, six very broad, sweeping legislation or bills that were approved at the state that really affect local municipalities, us being one of the ones that's affected by all of them, so.
Well, a lot of Code Next was already in it.
Yes, that's the one great part about where we stand versus a lot of other cities.
We took care of a lot of that stuff, so.
This Code Next is already, was already approved, and it adjusted a lot of what's required in there, but now there's one bill that requires housing needs assessments to be done by every city, and then we have to do another one every, I believe, three years after that. We have to adopt housing action plans as a city, they have to be amended every two or three years after that. There's a host. I will say, we'll give you the shout-out, we have a study session with council on November 12th to discuss all of these bills with council, so. Tune in to listen, that'll be an interesting conversation.
We're going to do that in the night, not like a Saturday? Is that like a Monday night?
It's, I think it's Tuesday.
I was going to say that.
November 12th, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Veterans Day is Monday, so, that's why it's all moving a day after.
That's a good time.
Moving on? For it, everyone, yeah?
All right, let's move on to the Global Trends Report. So, some of the things that, basically, what's happened, downtowns have recently come out of the COVID-19 global pandemic, and the pandemic greatly accelerated trends that hit downtowns, hard fundamental transformations of downtown markets. Downtowns are experiencing some exciting opportunities for positive change, but also face strong headwinds from trends. Conclusions, pandemic was a great accelerator of trending change, so these changes were already kind of in the works a little bit. They just greatly, the pandemic just greatly accelerated them. Technology was there, actually, about, for all these like Zoom apps and Teams and all that, that was all kind of in the works, and it just came to the forefront, to everyone's attention, because of the global pandemic. And so, that, and then there was also, you know, that was, at that time, some, there was already trends of people working more from home, and that just greatly accelerated as well. Another trend that I could point to is probably transportation. And, you know, I think there was some, you know, the ridership for our public transportation systems was probably a little stagnant at the time, and then it's just fallen off a cliff. And it's still pretty amazing to me, especially, the bus ridership, I think, has come back pretty well, but the light rail is totally transformed, and most of those trains are empty, and the parking lot is empty, and it's, the people who are riding the trains had other options and decided, and have not come back to that option. They're more and more working at home, and probably like going downtown to the office two or three days a week, and they seem to be opting to ride, drive or something, other than take those trains. And I think there's, and one of the things I think is, there's a safety element as well with the trains. You know, when you're on a bus, you get on, and there's a bus driver at the front, and there's, that seems to, that probably makes people feel a bit more comfortable, that there's somebody there. Whereas when you get on trains, oftentimes, there's nobody else on the train, because the conductor's somewhere up at the front, and there's all these different cars, and there's just no other buddy on there. And so, that's kind of a little scary, I think. And it used to be when they're full, then you felt secure, because there's all these other people on there, but now when they're almost empty, that really changes the mentality, I think. And so, that's something that they haven't figured out yet.
But it doesn't help that the light rail goes to 18th and California, or some nonsense location, rather than Union Station, too.
No, yeah, sure. Yeah, then there, you know, there's been these detours, and then they got rid of the C line, they couldn't operate that.
Yeah, that's what's happened.
That's true.
So, yeah, they've had labor problems, too. And some of these other things, demographics remain favorable, but cannot be taken for granted, you know, we still have a really young population out there that really wants, really likes urban places and downtowns, but, you know, if you don't, if you don't have the fundamentals right, they have other opportunities, and, you know, maybe they'll prefer like Tennyson Street to an urban, you know, downtown.
South Broadway, maybe?
All downtown real estate sectors require fresh thinking, and I think we've started seeing that. We've had a couple, some things on Broadway that were once these very large retail spaces that in the, you know, very distant past, were either like grocery stores or department stores originally, and then they became typically furniture outlets later on. But that's really because of the way retail is, and it's going, coming, you know, more and more where you just order furniture, like, from Wayfair or Amazon. A lot of that's just gone away, and these spaces are really hard to repurpose, because they're just so large. And so, what we've started seeing is people's opening their offices in those spaces on Broadway, so that's happening. And we probably won't see, because of these trends of working from home, is that there's just not going to be, you can't, there's, that's not going to be new offices being built at all, because that, in fact, there's, they don't know what they're going to do with all these empty office buildings in the city, so. So that's going on. Downtowns play a critical role as central gathering places. That's really, that's kind of interesting, later on, there's stuff about how communities are polarized, and how can downtowns bring people together. Downtown's challenges require local and regional collaboration. When I think about that, I think about the homeless, you know, issues that we have that are pervasive throughout the region, and so, some of that, you know, is going to, is going to take, is going to need larger coalitions, you know, at different levels to solve. And downtowns will benefit from embracing new leadership, and I think that's happening as well. You know, when I first started working here in the early 2000s, you know, there was a longstanding business community here, with a lot of longstanding businesses that cater to more of the traditional Inglewood, blue collar community. But a lot of those businesses have gone away, because they were just ready to retire, and a lot of them have been replaced with these businesses that are run by younger peoples, that are catering to the newer newcomers in the community. So I think that's happened a lot here in Inglewood as well. Some of the management implications are, the fundamentals are still fundamental. I mean, if it's not clean and safe, people aren't going to come here. Activate storefronts and reinvent offices, I think, as I mentioned, that's happening, and Hillary Portell from the DDA is really pushing, she's really pushing hard to activate the Inglewood Piazza area, in some fashion with different, there's, the Historical Society has offices there now, she's got an art studio to come in, and I'm probably missing something, too, that's over there now. And create, inviting civic spaces and program them differently, and Hillary's on top of that, too. She's, has been putting together plans for Broadway, some different improvements in the alleys, she has identified Hampton Avenue west of Broadway as a festival street. And what else is she doing? Yeah, I think there's some other, I can't really think of the, that's probably about that, as all of those, but. And focus on amenities to become a neighborhood for living. You know, what are the things that are missing downtown that people would want to see, that would help make that more of a neighborhood, a livelihood, a neighborhood that where you could get all your needs met? And then the top 10 overview of the Global Trends Report, talking about changing demographics. Obviously, that we, you know, we are, the Gen Y and Gen Z are now ascendant, and they're, they have a lot more diversity, and so you need to kind of think about how we can be inclusive of those types of peoples without excluding our historical populations as well. Talent and labor, that was kind of interesting, that there's a shortage, that they predict shortages of labors in really active downtowns, and we've kind of heard that, actually, from the DDA. Some of the members of the DDA say that their employees just can't live here, and they live in some other suburb like Arvada or Aurora, because they just can't live here, and that's kind of a detriment to their business models, finding the labor force necessary to conduct their businesses. Future of work, we have more and more people work from home. I think we'll also see more of these, you know, communal workspaces, where people, kind of coworking spaces, I think that's happened here in Inglewood as well. Probably going to see a lot more of those as we go forward. Consumer behaviors, you know... Consumer behaviors, you know, lots of things are now available through, at your doorstep, through Amazon and whatnot. And that's changing the types of businesses we see, retail businesses in our downtowns as well. And lots of stores are closing, you know, old traditional retailers are just, are falling by the wayside. And of course, we have the housing crisis and that, I don't think there's really any explanation necessary for that. And then this, this one was kind of interesting, the finding community in a polarized age. And the thing I thought about that was, is that, you know, we've, a lot of times in public meetings, we've, we've heard from groups that have been here a long time, that are not comfortable with a lot of the changes that are happening. And sometimes there's, you know, there's kind of us versus them and we, we don't know those people and they're different from us and we don't, we don't trust them and we don't really have interactions with them. And it's like, how can we bring all these, the newcomers and the long timers together? And interact and know each other more. And I think the city is doing that a lot with their, they're, they have these neighborhood programs and sponsoring a lot of different neighborhood events that I think are designed to do these things. Public health and safety, you know, there again, we have a lot of, you know, there's a lot of issues that have come in this area from the homeless situation that scares a lot of people. And, you know, the different behaviors that people want to avoid. And so that, that's, you know, when you look around here, sometimes it seems kind of empty. And I think that's, some of that's going on there as well. And then climate and environment, we have, you know, there's, we've had this record heat this fall. And I think that some of that thing is, there's, you know, that's going to affect the heat island problem. And we need to look at ways of how we can transform the areas so that we're not having the seas of concrete. We have more of a natural environment that can help mitigate some of that effect. And then technology was interesting as well because they talked about surveillance, cameras, big data, collecting data on people and as well as the mobility aspect as well. So that, that, that was kind of interesting to me as well. And then growing, finally growing inequity and inequality. And, you know, that, once again, you know, there's, sometimes I think there's a thing about, well, we don't want those kind of people or those people don't have any money. But, you know, they're kind of important parts of our community, too. And so those, those are issues as well there. So at this point, I just wanted to, I think I'll, we'll just let, throw this open for a little bit of a discussion. What, what do you think of all these different issues really struck you personally? That you think that Inglewood really needs to pay attention to through this update?
I've, I've certainly got two. You know, the housing crisis, existence of the Affordable Housing Task Force right now. I, I think it absolutely has to be the whole, the goal of live and all the objectives underneath need to be looked at in that context. 2016 was a very different environment. In fact, plan was adopted in 2016, but probably based on information from more like 2012, 13, 14.
A lot of the graphs were 2013, too, that I noticed in the
Yeah.
original document.
So whether that was told to council, we're not going to change any of this stuff, I absolutely would think that. Some of this needs to be looked at through the lens of the task force, the needs assessments. You know, there's, there's no reference in any of those objectives to affordability, attain, or attainability or preservation of existing affordability. There's lots of talk about redevelopment and making redevelopment really easy and accessible. About replacing units, replacing substandard units. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to just focus on scrapes and duplexes, you know, going up. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to look into that. Like I said, with a lot of these resources that are now available. And I think that the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations should certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm surprised there's not, there hasn't been a session with the Affordable Housing Task Force of, hey, here's the live section of the comp plan. Like, how do these, you know, that certainly is an opportunity to bring those two things together. So that's the live piece. I was really interested in, I think the slide before this where it talks about polarization. Oh yeah, finding community in a polarized age. I think there's a real opportunity in the play section, play is not, I don't think it should just be parks and rec and sort of recreational opportunities. I think that's a real opportunity for community building. You know, I'm sure the, the studies, I mean, all these studies are showing, you know, social club membership is down, church membership is, and attendance is down. And like, is there an opportunity that, for the city to support community building where some of these things certainly have been on the down slope? So maybe that fits in play, maybe there's an opportunity there to build out some of that, that piece in that section.
Thank you.
That's good.
I actually had noted, can we support the Gothic or something? You know, we have this iconic venue in our city and I don't know that it really gets enough recognition from, you know, the, either downtown or any of us, you know, to, you know, I, I go there every once in a while, but it's been a while for me also. But, you know, we, we've got this great venue, how do we utilize it?
I think it's all part of community identity, right? And, and community building.
Yeah. And there was, when you talked about affordable, you, you noted, and I forgot I noted this, too, in page 24 in live and the key points. It says, "Zinglewood's older, smaller homes, a tranquil, low-pierced cities in Denver, metro area aren't retaining families." But are they affordable? Are they, you know, are we, should we not just say, yeah, scrape all these so we can build bigger houses? Right? Where, is that one that we want to maybe reconsider how that, that's written under the key points? Is it providing that opportunity maybe for, for young families?
Well, and it talked a lot at that same section about Inglewood's average square footage is like 1,200, something like that. Whereas homes that are currently being sold are more in the
Twenty-three, yeah.
2,000, 2,500 square foot range. So you have to take that into consideration because that's obviously a global trend, so.
What I see happening is similar to what happened in Littleton. They spent two years on their Affordable Housing Tax Force and they ended up with an ordinance. So in Littleton, they have what's called the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and it's a citywide policy. So I expect that to come out of your recommendations. Then they'll go to this council and I, and in this, these units must be, a portion of every new residential development with five or more units must include affordable units. These units must be affordable to renters making 60% of the AMI. Now, I'm not saying that it will exactly, but you can see how that's that direction. And then we have to write a comprehensive plan that has the potential to embrace that. And then I would add that, where was I going with this? We have an aging population and it's not, they're not all just dying off. It's actually growing. And they do feel disenfranchised a lot because we have a young, a young council, all but one member, maybe two. And, you know, I, I'm right around the corner and all of us will be one day, two. So we do have to think about a way of embracing all the, all the different ages. And that, that is difficult. I know change is hard, but we, we need to figure out a way, definitely, to bring that community together.
And Brenda, I'll actually elaborate a little bit upon that because I am on Medicare, okay? So I'm one of those gray hair ladies, okay?
Okay.
But part of what struck me in reading through all of this is that it does mention seniors, but it doesn't really talk about catering to seniors and their needs. Seniors are not getting on a freaking bus. They're not riding their bicycle. They're not, all of these things. And so what's more important to us is, or what's, one of the things that's really important to us is safety, which is up there.
Yep.
And that would include lighting, not just policing, it would just lighting. And it would also include parking, because we're going to drive a car there or we're going to have Junior drive the car for us or something, that's how we're getting places. So we can't just totally eliminate that everybody's going to ride a bi, ride a bike or ride a bus or all that sort of stuff. We have to remember that the seniors, well, even the, the young moms are not going to take, you know, their cat litter and their giant thing of toilet paper on a bus or, or a bicycle or anything like that, too. So it's not just seniors, although that's what I'm highlighting, it's, we do need to look at the whole community. But we do have a lot of parking, too. I'm not saying that we couldn't get rid of some parking, but I'm just saying we don't want to go extreme in either direction.
Yeah, they do feel like it's going too much in that direction, right?
Yeah, I feel, I feel that way.
A mom with two twins, you've got to carry her, you're not
Just one kid's enough, trust me.
We need a parking space, park it in front of the restaurant, darn it.
I think that being said, we look at some of the parking lots around Walmart or
Oh, no, we have a lot of, we have seas of parking.
Always designed for one person in one car and, you know, so. But I get you, about.
I, I hear you, we have seas of park, especially around the city center, you know, right where we are now. We have seas of parking available.
Yeah, what are we going to do, a lot of RTD parking we don't need now? The whole lot, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it'll ever, I don't, that ridership was going downtown to work. And I used to take that downtown to work.
Yeah.
No one goes downtown to work, so, or a few, so.
And I think that some of, I, I am curious on maybe other cities, too, on their return. I mean, RTD, like you said, was kind of already going down, but a lot of other cities had been going up. So is there, are we, Denver tends to be a little behind, usually like in, in trends, you know? It feels like sometimes what might be happening in another major city, we might be following. I, I'm not saying that everyone's going back downtown five days a week, that's probably never going to happen. But are more people going to continue to start going back downtown? Will that ridership come back? Maybe it's a, a hope of mine, but I do think that there is a reality that people are going to continue to go back downtown more often and more often and more often. And that's going to become more of the norm because there are benefits of, of being together, of those communities, of, of, you know, businesses want to have their people close to them, whether it's control thing or just the reaction, the reality of trying to learn from each other. I think there are benefits. So I do think that's going to come back. It's not going to be instantaneous and it's probably not going to be, you know.
Probably will, but it sounds like Dr. Cog has got that wound up around buses, around the Broadway corridor and the Colfax corridor. So I was just talking specifically about that light rail parking lot we've got over here.
Sure, which is already too big.
Yeah, it's kind of big.
Well, and we have to realize that, I mean, right now, I know you, you said no, but trust me, I just looked it up the other day. That the light rail at Inglewood Station goes down to Eighteenth and California, it does not go to Union Station at all.
You have to switch it, probably.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I thought with the construction, they made you switch, they switched it back to Union Station. I, I know for, because they canceled the C line.
Yeah.
But then I thought with this.
Anyway, but regardless of where it goes now, RTD is in charge of that. So we're not in charge of where that freaking light rail goes. I mean, the tracks go to certain places, but it doesn't always necessarily go where we want it to go. We would like it to go to Union Station because that's the natural place for everybody to get on and off and go on another train or a bus or whatever. It's not, and it's in RTD's hands, not ours. So we can't really totally control that, we have to acknowledge that.
But eventually the 16th Street Mall will be done someday. And the connection will be there. And I, I think
I have theater tickets, I go down there all the time, it is empty downtown. It is empty, unless you're right around the theater, it is empty everywhere down there.
So I, I would say, for me, public health and safety, I think, going to some of those things, because I think when things are empty, there are the, the safety, the safety side of it, that's the one I think that sticks out to me, if you're asking about which is the, which of these resonates with me the most.
I'm curious if there's more ways to sort of overlap some of these things because the health and, or the public health and safety, I think, and frankly, the, you know, finding community, those things are all going to potentially overlap somewhere like downtown. If we can get downtown to be successful, there's a lot of great restaurants and stores there currently, but there's also gaps where it kills the whole block. So when you've got the bookstore that has curtains up and all their windows blocked, is there a zoning violation potentially there? But saying, hey, you're essentially, you may as well put a brick wall up, you're basically killing 50 feet of storefront for the street. And then you've got the, I think it's the, it's the clothing store that's on the corner of the, across from King Super next to the liquor store that's been, you know,
Oh, the Big and Fall.
fenced up for a while. But like, that's probably why the poke place failed. No one wants to sit there and eat poke when there's like six dudes doing heroin across the street.
Yeah, it's so awful there.
So, like, there's, there's small pieces that feel like maybe there's a couple of these things that overlap that you can't fix one of them and expect everything to come back, like there's three or four overlapping issues. Sorry, I'm rambling, but
No, the good point, I, the good point.
That it feels like, you know, downtown Inglewood, I love going down there when I can. There's just not enough to keep me there for more than like an hour at a time. And so if you could take the model of South Broadway in Denver, frankly, which Mutiny moved down here, Fancy Tiger moved down here, like are there other ways to incentivize retailers from other form, current or formerly popular sort of micro retail destinations that you can entice to come fill in some of these places? Because they're all going to benefit if people stick around on the block for two or three hours as opposed to one hour. And one of them alone is never going to survive, so you have to get a bunch all at once.
Well, and the good news is Inglewood has a small downtown.
Right, so it's
Compared to downtown Denver, which
Right, you can fill it in pretty easily.
Good heavens, I have no idea what that's going to look like in five years, 10 years.
And I think you asked some of the business understand there, too, that there's just not enough population here to support the volume of business, that they really need to make a really nice restaurant or really great specialty shop or whatever. So again, my perspective back to housing and making it affordable and attainable for people to live here and shop here and work here, really. I think there's one other thing that pointed out to me was the growing inequity and inequality. I think that is a significant one, that again, goes back to housing of attainability, you know, pushing people further out into the suburbs. There's a transportation component to that that burdens people. I think a lot, maybe, you know, 60% of these trends kind of focus back to housing and also transportation. But specifically, I think housing is just such a key one for Inglewood. Keeping our population here, making it accessible for our population to grow sustainably, sustainable, gentle density, all of those things. So I, I just, you know, if there's one theme that I could see as being imperative for an update to this comp plan, it's around housing.
I'd agree.
And we're competing with all the other cities for that, too.
Is there a lot of empty office space in downtown Inglewood?
The
Chase Tower?
The Chase Tower and the Wells Fargo Tower, and I think they've, might have those banks or fluids and then they might have gone out of those recently, but those two towers are, those have been pretty successful, pretty full. The, the one that's, this Hampton West that's kind of across the street is less successful.
Which Hampton West.
Inglewood is not a place where
One night across the street.
It's right across the street from here.
No, it's, it's not.
Yeah.
There have been conversations about how to get housing closer to Broadway. So, for example, that big and tall, you know, King Super's parking lot that's mostly empty. Have there been thoughts of like repurposing that somehow or rezoning it? I don't know if it's zoned currently for multifamily, but that seems like a good way of bringing a bunch of affordable units to right next to your downtown retail center that creates affordable housing, creates a workforce for those stores, creates, you know, people, patrons for those stores and restaurants. And it's, it's a big empty parking lot, like, why is that? The only thing I've seen happen there is not good. Like, I've literally seen someone get like assaulted and thrown in the back of a pickup truck there, so. Like, nothing, no one's interested in hanging out there when all you see are caged up buildings and people that are passed out.
So, yeah, interestingly, that, that block is, has an interesting history. It does represent this sort of really yawning gap in the middle of our downtown where it's just not active. Some, apparently, the owner of the Kaufmans, former Kaufmans building, somebody is, is working on that right now. And I think there, the, the goal for that project is to turn it into a, a restaurant space that would have a rooftop restaurant on it.
Yes, I've seen the plans.
Yeah. I saw the fences go up and I'm like, oh, great, they're tearing it down.
No, they'll just have a nice view of the bus stop from the top of the bar.
But what about, I mean, the sea of parking lots between here and Broadway? Like, are there, I mean, I guess there were some issues with the housing right here that wasn't filled in, right? So it's being fully that wasn't filled in, right? So it's being fully subsidized or something like that.
What I'll tell you is those big box stores don't like to give up their parking.
No, they don't.
Well, unless that redeveloped, there's nothing that you could hold them to have to redo that section. Now, if the King Supers did redevelop, that would, you could say you would need to activate Broadway.
Right, so then, if it, if it all redeveloped, it would go back to Code Next, and they would have to meet one of the four um, frontage designs, so frontage A, buildings all the way up to the street, parking in the back. Frontage design B is, you know, you get a little bit further back, but I think in the MBV one and MBV two, only A and B are allowed by right. C is allowed, I know D you can't do. So basically, if they were to redevelop, they couldn't build what they've already built. So that's there now, it can stay there. If somebody wanted to tear it down and start over, they couldn't do it again.
I imagine that eventually, housing redevelopment will make its way down Broadway. They've been able to put housing along Broadway for a long time, right? I mean, they've always been able to do that. I, we don't know why nobody wants to, no one's gotten interest in doing it. It's kind of maddening, really.
We should be the pro forma for facilities right now.
I think Inglewood's difficulty is we have a lot of small lots that would take somebody a lot of assemblage time to get everything together, to build something large enough for them to be profitable. So what you see in, you know, north on Broadway, as you see these bigger projects, it's harder to do that. Along Broadway, when very narrow, we have a lot of older lots, they're very narrow, they're very small, and you'd have to assemble a lot to get.
And they're very expensive. Uh, so I've, I have looked into a lot of different recent housing projects here in Inglewood, and investigate how much they purchased the land for to build their project. And, you know, they're looking, basically, most of these projects are in the range of, you know, fifty to sixty some, uh, dollars a square foot. That's kind of what they are, their sweet spot to make their project work. But when you look at what's for sale on Broadway, there's not a lot for sale, but when there is, then I go and look at what, what is that price per square foot? And it's well over a hundred dollars for square foot. And so that's part of the issue as well.
You're talking about land area, square foot, right? Not the construction cost.
What we are seeing are. Oh, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it used to be a house. Houses all along Broadway. I know, 'cause my mother lived in one. So that's the lot size. It's a house size, so instead, there's a used car lot there now.
So what we are seeing, or we've got, we've had one DRT this last year, we've met with them twice. Um, they wanna tear down an existing building and build like a small, uh, office space on bottom with four units above. Um, so very small, or we're seeing in, um, downtown proper, we're, we're seeing people trying to convert the existing second floor of some of those buildings. So that's more of what we're seeing. We're not seeing like these, you know, large apartment buildings, uh, in downtown. We're just seeing conversion of space, or these much smaller boutique projects.
The guy that, uh, built the, the, bought the Elks Club, he was gonna, he's building condos that, uh, for three hundred and forty thousand, he promised. Uh, he said that's what he, what they would sell for. Do we know what they're selling for now? They're, they're done, and they're on market.
What's the address?
So the ones that are built now are townhomes. They're fully subdivided. They're not necessarily condos. The Elks Lodge Lodge project, I believe, is next on their list. They started doing some of the demo work. Um, they demoed all the stuff on Galapago, but from what I understand, that project is coming third. But the, yes, the the Elks Lodge is what they're working on right now.
That's supposed to be luxury, though.
Yeah, I don't know what they would be.
Well, he, he said three forty.
There were three different, Bill, three different projects he proposed. The apartments, those were definitely lower priced, although we don't think they're affordable. The ones on Galapago were mid-priced with the little townhomes that were in the back, which I wish they'd build next, because that's by me. And then the Elks Lodge, I understood, was luxury, though. I don't think they're gonna be, they're all not three forty. They're, those will be more expensive. I think by design. That's what I recall from that whole, when we had three back to back with that, with that builder.
Do what now?
Remember, we did three PDU's?
Yep.
Back to back, yeah.
Peter, what's his name?
Peter Kudla.
That's what I recall, was that that was supposed to be luxury, but the ones by me are supposed to be affordable condos, so it's kind of sad that they're not moving on those.
Yeah, I don't know what the reasoning or rationale behind their timing is. I just know that they're building one project, once they get it done, they're gonna move on to the next one. And they're really close to wrapping up the townhome project right now. They're built, they're doing some final, uh, final inspections, some final stuff with us.
That is probably what you're thinking of. Those are more affordable.
Uh, I think it's the ones that are already built.
Yeah.
There, there's two buildings, I think, that are built now. And the ones on Galapago, that's still dirt. Uh, and the Elks Club is still there. So, do, do we know what the, uh, Affordable Housing Group is thinking about? Do we have any preview on what they're gonna say?
Not really. Um, they've been, so Brad and Nancy do more of the liaison work for them. John, I think, has been to every meeting. They've been presented anything from what inclusionary zoning looks like to looking at fast-tracking permitting requirements. You know, I've gone to present to what Code Next did for, uh, more on a naturally affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing approach, so just building more housing in the community in general. Um, so we're, they've, they've been through the educational phases, John said, of all this, you know, very broad, broad, broad spectrum of information. Um, so now what they're doing, I think, at least my best, uh, description of it is digesting all that information to come up with the recommendations.
Last month, we started on developing the recommendations that we're looking for. So several series of meetings leading up to December, where we're workshop, and there's different work streams, or different focus areas of like, uh, supporting building of, of housing and affordable housing. How to fund it, and how to, you know, there's a couple, there's four, five different sort of focus areas, and all that.
How about the, uh, Bonzi Gardens, that, is that, uh, being rented out there? It's, it's like, I, I can't remember the number of, I think it's a hundred and forty units down there. Uh, it's all afford, it's, I think it's all. Could be just partial affordable housing, but that should be done by now.
Where's that?
It's in Sheridan. It's, uh, just south of, uh, two eighty-five on Federal.
Yeah, over by the Envirotest Places was, yeah, is.
It's a, it's a big, uh, it's huge. And, uh, it was supposed to be sixty percent.
Yes, I think it got the, it got the tax credits from the state, so it'd have to be, I think it's all under sixty percent. Yeah, I haven't been over there, so I'll have to go see how they're progressing.
So what do we wanna do with these global trends, so now? How do we wanna incorporate these?
Good questions. Anybody have any, uh, thoughts on that? Well, I think, I think, I think I've been hearing some stuff, uh, you know, housing is very important. Uh, some of the inequality and equity, so you guys have been bringing up what you thought was the most, that really was most important to you. I think I've been hearing that from, at least from some of you. If you guys have other thoughts, uh, this is time now to tell us.
I have one thought on the, um, maybe it's finding community. Um, I think Inglewood has an opportunity to maybe make some activities more in the neighborhood parks, rather than down at the clamshell, or something like that. Maybe a whole bunch of food trucks. Uh, I know like a, a Rappahoe Acres, sometimes, at least they used to have, like, the first Friday, they would have food trucks in their neighborhood, or something like that, you know, around the different parks or something. So like, at Cushing Park, on the third Thursday or something, there's gonna be, you know, food trucks, and maybe you just hang up a big sheet and have, you know, play Shrek or something. I don't know.
They do that, though. They have neighborhood nights, right?
Well, yeah, but that's sort of like a citywide, everywhere is a neighborhood night. It's like this first Tuesday in August, or whatever it is. I'm talking about maybe a little more frequent and smaller around in the city.
Neighborhood Nights is a program where we go to every, I think almost every single park, on a different Thursday, um, throughout the summer. Um, the, it, it's put on by our.
I think it's just like, each park gets one night, though, is it?
Right, they do get one, you want more.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, it's a suggestion, that's all.
Sure.
Because that's where your community starts, is, is the very local, and the blocks just around you.
What I'll say is, um, so during Neighborhood Nights in twenty twenty-three, I was the lucky individual, I chose myself, to take Code Next out there and present to the community. And I'll tell you that, um, in a community that was that polarized around a certain topic, it was still very friendly.
Oh, good.
Like, every night, every time I was there, people would offer to grab a snow cone and bring it over if I wanted it, or, you know, hey, would you, you know, we're gonna go get some tacos, do you want something? I, I told them when I came back to the office, this is the friendliest community I've ever worked in.
Nice.
They may not always like what we're working on, but still, the people in general were just very friendly. Uh, even though, you know, they tell me, I know what it is, and I don't like it, but they were still very polite and very nice. So I, I, it's one of the reasons I'm still here, and I love working here. But it was, it was very nice to hear even people that had opposing views sitting there talking to each other about the issues was very good.
Those food, food trucks, that, that, actually, it's a trailer that sells tacos. Seventeen bucks a pe- a taco.
Ooh, which, which food truck is that?
Taco?
They're good. They're good, but.
Seventeen bucks for one.
I would tell you, the, uh, the trailers are pretty awesome, too. The, the block party trailer is, uh, I think, something that is, maybe we get a couple more of those, because I, I think those usually get reserved pretty early on, and they're, um, I, I think they are great for your local neighborhood, and maybe not the full park kind of area, but like, you get your whole block together.
Yeah, block parties you can do, or get somebody to do. I keep thinking about doing it myself.
I've gone a couple times, and they've been reserved. I, I know I had a friend that got theirs, but, um, just down the street from us, and I ended up going to their block party.
So in, in this section, do you want us to say, maybe, you know, there's a global trend, item ten, growing inequity and inequity, you know, provide a summary, and then maybe provide information of what we've done recently that might be trying to bridge those gaps, or where we're failing? Is that what y'all are looking for in this? I know, Aaron, you were a big, uh, proponent of when we worked on the, um, even something small, like housing, uh, home-based occupations, home occupations, of including language that tries to bridge some of those gaps. Is that what y'all want us to maybe try to include in some of these sections?
The, the city was gonna do citywide Wi-Fi at one time, or they were talking about it. Uh, is there any possibility to, uh, I, I don't know how many people don't have Wi-Fi in Inglewood, but I'm sure there's some. And, uh, maybe it's, uh, the kids would benefit more than, than anybody, so. I don't know if that's ever been brought up again. Uh, th- this is from like eight years ago.
It may have been more relevant in the past, because a lot of like phone plans are now unlimited data, whereas eight years ago, a lot of it was like big upcharge to pay for that, so maybe, it may have become less of a need based on what most people have in their pocket, potentially. Not everyone has it, but it's probably shifted.
Yeah, the cell phone plans include Wi-Fi.
A lot of fiber, or it's been added, or it serves. So I, I think recognizing that there are changes since twenty sixteen, having some sort of summary that, you know, says, these are the, the changes. I, I, I have a hard time reflecting downtown, because we're not a downtown region. We are a suburban, urban region, um, but we're not, we're, we're not downtown Denver. We're, that's, that's not us, but, you know, one of these items, I, I think, recognize that there's been changes since twenty sixteen, and referencing a report like this of some of the changes that happened, but maybe reflecting the ones that are important to us, you know, that we think that the public health and safety, that the, the housing especially, um, are, in the community, are the most important, uh, factors for how we want to focus our plan moving forward, would, I think, be reasonable to, to include.
Yes, our, our urban design elements, based on the global myth, uh, trends that we've identified tonight, and almost always, but they all kind of go around housing. But yeah, our urban design elements, that, that seems to be, I just Googled it. I went to look for something like that. Because, yeah, we're not two cities downtown, and then here's the rest of us, you know. It kind of feels like that, um, because we have this other downtown authority, but, um, we're not just, you know, some of what you said.
And, and we, we've got this opportunity for downtown that I think we're, we're all, it's, it's got some pieces, you know, and it's got some opportunity. There's a lot of things going on, but we're, we're not there yet. So how, how do we need to focus on what does that downtown redevelopment look like? Uh, is that part of this opportunity here? I mean, I've been, you know, talking about like reconnecting parks, which includes like Little Dry Creek, reopening that up to have that continuous green belt, to be able to go through the community. How do we continue to, you know, make nature into our urban environment, and, and use the swaths of parking that we have around this building into something that's more functional, and more impactful for the businesses that are around here?
See, we're in a difficult position, because they're already in talks, aren't they, to buy, to the, the, uh, to sell the, uh, rights to this property. They're already kind of talking about it, aren't we? I mean, this could be happening at the same time, or even before this downtown gets developed, or de- designed, I should say. I mean, we're not, we wanted these elements. We've said that from the beginning. Anybody who did any of these surveys said, we wanted the creek brought back, and, and a lot of that. I know we've said it, but at the end of the day, Inglewood doesn't own all that property, so we've already got a pending PUD on, um, the Hobby Lobby area. We don't own that property. We don't know what's gonna happen to Big Lots. And then this downtown, this city center area is, um, I mean, how much say can we have on, on, on some, on a instrument like this? How much, what can we do here to drive what we want the Inglewood City Center to look like?
Yeah, this is a high-level document. It's, uh, it's a, and, uh, I think we have, as a group, you know, we did appro, we did develop our Inglewood Station Transit Station Area Specific Plan. And that's where we're going to ha- use that document. It, it is the zoning that will be used for this area. And that is where we had our influence, where, with the station area, you know, uh, guidelines and, uh, you know, and whatnot. So, so this is really going to be, this is really higher level, um, and probably looking more at, you know, land use changes, um, going beyond, we, we kind of know what will happen at City Center, even though it hasn't happened yet. We kind of know what, what's going to happen to Hobby Lobby, and most likely, we know what's going to happen at, um, Inglewood Marketplace eventually, too. But, but what's gonna happen, and we, we kind of actually have an inkling of what's gonna happen on, you, you, south of two eighty-five, but, um, you know, because we're starting to see these housing projects, and, um, you know, is that, should that play, should that area be, should we be, you know, are we, is our current regulations hindering any of that? Is, is that, you know, if you're doing PUDs left and right over there, why is that? And, and should we, should we be really focusing some of our planning attention over there, um, looking to make some changes?
Yeah, everything can't be housing. I mean, you wanna have some industrial, you wanna have some office, you want some, you know, all of those, all the other different, you know, entities, yeah.
Um, other changes, another area that might be, will probably get hotter eventually, is the medical district, the wellness district. We know that, uh, Craig Hospital, oh, all the hot, both hospitals are constantly in thinking about how they're going to expand. And, you know, we, we just had a recent meeting with the hospitals, and Swedish has already started to contemplate expansion of their newest tower, adding a few floors to it. And, and Craig. And, and Craig Hospital is, is gearing up for a, a fundraising effort so that they can expand their hospitals, build a new community garden, et cetera, et cetera. So, and then there could just be more pressures for, and, you know, we're seeing very interesting projects over there, like 14-story towers. I mean, who would have thunk that?
Who owns the Safeway, Swedish?
The old Safeway?
Yeah.
Yeah, Swedish owns that.
Oh, good to know. Because that is.
On Logan?
Yeah, on Floyd. Yeah, and you, you won't know it's an old Safeway unless you're an old person who lived here a long time. It was something else for a while, but it was the original Safeway. It's on Floyd and Sherman.
Hampton and Sherman.
No, it's on Hampton and Sherman.
Oh, you mean that Safeway? No, we're talking the old, old Safeway on Floyd, that building that's just been sitting there.
Where's that?
Okay, very good. See, this is going to come up, by the way.
Wait a minute, I'm a native, so I, I, what are you talking about?
Yes, let me find it. It's old. It's got a gate all around it. It's Sherman and, I'm sorry. Yeah, an old Hampton.
It's Sherman and Old Hampton.
All right.
Yeah, I didn't use Floyd, but then we are talking about the same building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The reason I bring it up is because some neighbors have complained to Councilman Morton. He wants to have a, just so you know, if you don't know already, he wants to have a steady meeting on abandoned buildings on, in Inglewood.
There's a fence around it.
And I wasn't really sure it's abandoned. It's owned. That's what I was, so Swedish bought that, bought that building and they're going to do something with it?
Well, actually they've owned it for a long time. It was.
There used to be a physical therapy thing there.
It was a physical therapy.
Because I went to PT there, yeah.
Yes. But at some point, yeah, they closed it down and they have just used it for staging their construction project.
Yeah, they're not happy about that.
That's why the fence is around it. Okay, that makes sense.
They're prob, yeah, neighbors are not very happy about that.
Yeah, we, we've identified that as a prime target for either parking or housing or maybe both. And, and we, we, it is time, sometimes difficult to work with Swedish because it's a corporate-owned entity that's, you know, got hospitals all over the country. And so sometimes it, you know, you might want to think you can work with the local leadership, but because it's a real estate matter, it's goes to Memphis or whatever, wherever they're at. So, but we're still, we still, we thought, we thought we heard some encouraging news, a little bit encouraging word at that meeting that we had with them. So we'll probably be trying to knock on that door again.
All right, good luck. But I didn't mean to derail the conversation.
What's a comparable city doing in these type of, like Littleton or, I don't know, Sheridan? Or what are those guys doing in terms of old trends?
So Sheridan is pretty small and doesn't really have a really strong business district. So they're probably not really paying too much attention to any of that. But Littleton, that'd be very interesting to see what they're doing there downtown and what they're paying attention to. But I haven't really, I know that they cut down lots of trees on their main street recently. And that's probably about, oh, and I, there's some new businesses down there and that's about all. I know they have a DDA now, but I haven't really followed what they're doing very closely. But that could be interesting. That's a good, interesting suggestion to take a look at.
They have a lot more space though. They have a lot.
Downtown.
There's a lot of empty lots around there.
We got a lot of empty parking lots around our downtown. But yeah, or like in Arvada or something like that, I feel like is similar.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good.
So I was just, we're talking about opportunities to see what others are doing.
We, during the Code Next process, when we were talking about the idea of adjusting the definition of households, we did some research on first ring, first ring suburbs that had very similar density levels and populations as us. So it might be prudent for us to look at like what some of those cities are doing. And that was more of a nationwide approach. So I want to say Beverly Hills was one of those. I'm trying to remember the names of the cities around the town.
It's a very, it's a very. I remember that.
I, I think it should be said, you know, the global trends report, it talks about downtowns. That doesn't just mean 60-story high-rise downtowns. I mean, they've done reports that for Longmont and for other, it just means, you know, central business districts of many sizes, not just Denver or, you know, capital cities or whatever. So don't, don't be put off that Inglewood's not a downtown. We're not Denver. It's, it's not what that's saying. It's talking about this urban mix of uses and so, yeah, just keep that in mind.
Retail on the bottom and the residential on top. I mean, you can, you can look at Littleton Parkway over here and it, it doesn't work for us.
Inglewood Parkway?
Inglewood Parkway, yeah. Right, right around the fountain there. But Ball Arena is going to do that in 47 acres. And somebody's putting a lot of money into that, billions of dollars into that to have retail and residential. So perhaps some, something is working.
It doesn't work because it's only three, there, there's not enough density down there to support it. I mean, there's one building in a sea of nothing else. So there's not really the population base that supports having that commercial down there. Now, if you could, if we had six, eight, 10 stories down on that one building maybe, or multiple buildings around there that had additional density. And again, that goes to maybe the district perspective of maybe not mixed use on every building, but mixed use enough to support these, because you're right, that one doesn't, hasn't been successful, but could it be?
Yeah, because I think using this redevelopment as an example for what doesn't work is there's so many reasons why it doesn't work here. Not just the form.
And you see it lots of other places, not just Inglewood. I mean, it's, it's a chronic problem.
But it's also, there's a chronic op, opportunity.
Opportunity, yeah, absolutely.
So do you think that the Belmar, Belmar shopping area and the Streets of South Glen situation was a, kind of fell apart because retail of those stores kind of died at the same time? You don't think it was because there's apartments and stores? It's also because big box stores aren't meeting the needs of customers online? I mean, do we think that's the reason why? Because I'd, I'd hate it to be, because we're probably going to do that. It'll probably be, this development will probably be stores and retail. And I was sad to learn that Streets of South Glen is, is not doing very well. But I'm, I'm thinking it's because it's just at the same time we've had COVID and at the same time, a lot of stores just aren't, retail stores just have to reinvent themselves.
Streets of South Glen also didn't have any real connections to transit or any affordability in that development. So, I mean, it's never just one thing. It's certainly not just the form of the development of just retail on Grand IV, housing above just doesn't work. There's, there's so many more complexities to it.
They worked for a while.
Well, in the right places, they do.
Years and years, they worked really well.
Cherry Creek seems to be okay.
But now it's not.
Yeah, Cherry Creek's okay.
It's, it's, it's possible to just get in the right mix of things and.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, well, and somebody has to spend a lot of money to invest in trying to find that right person that's interested in it. Like you said, around Ball, you know, it's Cronkies or whether it's around the Besko for Mile High, if they redevelop those parking lots.
None of those places are going to include 50,000 square foot Sears and Macy's, you know what I mean? Like that's, there's, there's lots of.
That's, that's worse, yeah.
So what else do you need from us today?
Well, that was really good conversations and so we are closing in on our time, I think. I had put together the map thing as in my back pocket as more of a, well, if I didn't get, you know, if I wasn't generating enough conversations, then we would use that to try to get you talking and thinking. But you guys did a really good job and so I, I don't think we have the time to do that exercise. But maybe, maybe at some other point in these series of, of, you know, study sessions, we can try to work that in again. But, but for tonight, I think this was all very good. And hopefully we will, we will point towards November 19th and we're going to, hopefully that's when we're going to have all the indicator data for you to go crunching over.
Yay.
So, yeah, so you have some of that to look forward to.
Was the map.
For that or just helping us be prepared for that would be helpful if there's reading or just, or even just like what you would like out of us for that meeting, what you would like out of us ahead of time would be helpful. And I did just have one last question. With the timeline for this update, will the Affordable Housing Task Force, if they're ending in December, does that timeline line up to have input into this comp plan refresh? Or just help us understand sort of the timelines for the refresh?
Yeah, yeah, that's a thing. So theoretically that works really well. But then, you know, then it goes to council and I don't know how long that's going to take, how much debate that's going to take. But, you know, at the very end, I'm hoping, you know, of our process that there'll be enough light that was shed through those discussions that we can, we do have a sense of where things are going and we can put as much of it into this document as we can. That's the hope. But yeah, there, you know, if, if there's just, if it's, you know, if we don't quite get there, there might have to be another phase to this sometime, you know, after in 2026. You know, that, that's possible. I mean, some, there's, certain cities do lots of comp plan amendments as things go on. And it may be, it might race to the level where we really need to do that. So we'll do the best we can with what, with what, how things play out and then we'll go from there and see where we're at.
And the great thing is they approved both of these, both the comp plan and then whatever the recommendations are. So they'll have a lot of influence on both sides of it, whether it's our comp plan update or what those policies and procedures are for affordable housing.
John, was the mapping exercise going to be talking about the way there's kind of a, a certain number of neighborhoods in here, but we have more distinct neighborhoods now, without anything to do with that? Okay.
No, no. So basically what the map exercise was going to be was I, I plotted out big aerial maps of downtown, of Seacenter downtown and Wellness District. And we were just going to split you up into groups and then have you, based on these global trends, illustrate your ideas for what you'd like to see or what opportunities might exist, what you hate, you know, and point it all out on these maps. And that was in case you, you know, we just didn't get, generate conversations from this. But you guys really did well and I don't think it's really necessary. And we're at their time anyway. And I don't want to keep you beyond 8:30, so.
Maybe that's something that can translate into the open house.
Oh, yeah, there's a good idea.
And then if there are thoughts, comments, are we, can we email those directly to you just on, on, on things that we have? Or does that have to go through Nancy? Is there any particular protocol that we should follow if there are additional notes as you're reading through things that we have questions on?
If, if it's a question that you think is something that we should respond to the entire group, send it to us and we'll likely tell you, we'll respond to the entire group and we'll take them down. Like I said, this is a very transparent process. We want to make sure that we're being open. So if you have questions, send it to us. If it's something about, we're just helping get information out, we can always send that to the group as a whole. But yeah, we want to make sure that if we're getting questions, we're just responding to everyone. We'll, we'll note your questions and then at the very next meeting, we'll come back and say, here's the questions we received over the last X amount of weeks. Here's our responses and answers.
Should we vote on it as a group before it goes to you or?
No.
Questions?
Any new ideas, like should we verify that the planning and zoning is approving this change?
Right, so when the draft is approved, that's when the Planning and Zoning Commission will get the opportunity to create a recommendation. So the very end of the process. Right now, we'll take general consensus on items if there's something like that. Once we get a little bit further into the weeds, we're kind of just brushing the surface right now.
I think that's when it comes back to us. It's like if somebody sends in, hey, what about this? Think about this, then they would bring it back to the entire.
All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, next we have staff choice. Any of you guys who have talked about?
I have a lot. No, the only update I have is the Home Occupations and Natural Medicine went to a public hearing at council last night. So we should be going for first reading in two weeks. So hopefully by next time, we'll let you know what council's direction was. That's all I have.
John Wood?
I have nothing.
John, do you want to let them know about the open house? And are we still starting the November 19th meeting at 7:00 PM? I don't think they're aware of the open house.
Okay. So our plan is to have an open house that, for the public to let, to, because we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We want to, we've scheduled that on the same day as our planning and zoning commission meeting. We're hoping that if you guys can, if you have the opportunity to attend that as well, that'd be great. We would, we, we think this is a great opportunity for you to interact with the public and hear their concerns. So the way we're looking at that is we'd like to have the open house between, so if you would just kind of come and go between 5:00 and 7:00. And then we would follow that immediately with our planning, zoning, study session. So we'd go from 7:00 to 9:00.
On the 19th?
On the 19th.
Where, where is it?
I think it's going to be the community room. Is that, yes, the community room.
Are both meetings going to be in the community room, community room and then council chambers?
Okay.
And then the only other thing I have is just a reminder, we will not be meeting on November 5th. So your next meeting is the 19th.
So again, just a request, if there's other things that we, you would like to have us have ready to send those out beforehand?
Yeah, if we have homework.
Yeah.
Reading, reading assignments and such, we'll send them out.
Late reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergio?
Oh, nothing for me.
Okay. Commissioner's Choice, welcome down. Brendan?
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
Good.
I'm good.
Kate? Asif? Yep. Carol?
Just thanks Brian and John. I mean, the comp plan's a big deal and it gets referenced all the time and it's very public and so thanks for.
Some of y'all are very lucky. You've gotten to work on a whole code update and now on a comp plan update.
The benefits.
Say if it was good luck or bad luck, but you're lucky. Not everybody gets the chance to do that.
It's pretty awesome. Eric?
Awesome.
Good also. So with that, meeting adjourned.